Well, I told John that Bill got his move on. Yeah, I come upstairs and I hear a voice in the later office. Did I get another target machine?
So I'm only going to count on 5.3 unless they show up.
Is everybody ready?
Speaker 5.3.
Okay.
Kendrick, the, how do you say it? Do you know how to say this? Delwobi?
Yeah, Delwobi, yeah. So the student senate is not here?
No. She has a like, she's a kid, probably have Christmas job, right? Having fun?
Please join me in the salute of the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam Secretary, roll call please.
Mia Chow.
Here.
Ms. Chun.
Here.
Mr. Rossi.
Here.
Ms. Doherty.
Here.
Mr. Lay.
Here.
Ms. Martin.
Ms. Thompson.
Here.
Six present, one absent.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome everyone to the chamber for the nice meeting, and I want to welcome everyone watching us from home. Before we start the meeting on the agenda, I'd like to briefly to introduce and say goodbye to my intern in the mayor's office, Nicholas Flynn. Nick, if you could, come to the podium. Nick is a fabulous barista, if I said correctly, prolific writer in the mayor's office, also intern in the case office as well, student at UMass Lowell. I want to thank you for all you do and for your help. I hope you learn a lot from the mayor's office as well as in the working of the city of Lowell. Please introduce yourself real quick, and please tell us what your plans are.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Nicholas Flynn. I'm a graduating senior from UMass Lowell, majoring in psychology and minoring in professional writing. And although this is my last semester, I can safely say this is the semester I have made the quickest amount of growth overall. This experience, this internship in City Hall with both the mayor's office and the case office, has been a very enriching experience. It's been a pleasure to see all the events that take place here in City Hall and get a much broader perspective of what exactly, what kind of work takes place here to benefit our city. And I am more motivated than ever to join the workforce next year and to continue being involved in Lowell functions. I'm very interested in communications work, and I've gained a lot of experience here that I think has given me great insights to continue forth with that career venture. Thank you.
Excellent work.
And I would like to thank you, Mr. Mayor, and Arassis from the mayor's office, and Peter Crew, and all the team at the case office for having me. Thank you so much.
Good job, Nick, as always. Thank you. I will see you soon. We'll now start with the minutes of the meeting. Need approval of the minutes of the regularly scheduled Lowell School Committee meeting of November 15, 2023. A motion accepted placed on file by Ms. Doherty, second by Mr. Lay.
Mr. Mayor, I actually have a question about the minutes.
You have a minute?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Thank you. So on page seven of the minutes, it mentions I had spoken about the lack of transparency with the families and the stakeholders from the Pawtucketville. I had made a motion that was unanimously passed to get all the testings done and then the findings released to all the stakeholders, including parent staff and the community. However, that was not done, and I was just, I really am curious as to if the interim superintendent could speak to why the motion was not adhered to in its completion. Thank you.
Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you. I take responsibility for the comment and for any part of that motion that was not followed through on. There was no intentional misleading on that. The situation with the Pawtucketville School has been difficult. It's been difficult in part because we understand that there is not an immediate health issue, but there is definitely an ongoing and longstanding concern at the school. We have been very transparent about the issue, both with the committee and with the school and with the teachers, for example. And in each stage when we have testing done at the school, we don't, we share that with the school, with all the staff, at the same time that we receive it ourselves. It's been sort of wide-open transparency, which actually turns out to be not always the very, the most effective. So for example, if you get a set of results that we don't fully understand or that we have questions about, we've already shared that with the school before we have asked those questions. So for example, we had an instance this fall of a false positive. And so we've tried to be as transparent as possible, particularly with the committee, particularly with the school. I think what you're pointing out is a missing part, which is with the community. Typically, the school themselves communicate with their families in the community, but that is not, in this case, the fault or blame to the school or to the principal. It's an error on my part, and I apologize.
I appreciate that. I just, I guess I'm concerned about there being motions being made and then not fully carried out in the way that this elected body has posted them. So I'm just, I was a little leery of that. Some, I appreciate you speaking toward it, but that is just something that, to my understanding, is not allowed under Robert's rules, for there to be a decision made in opposition of what the elected body has made, regardless of whether there is a, regardless of whether there's intent behind it or not. It's just, the rules are, if there's a motion made by this body, the rules are, the motion is to be carried out as written. Thank you.
Understood. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions on the minutes? If not, we had a second by Mr. Lay already, on favors I oppose, say no, I have it. Ms. Doherty, you have a comment on that as well? Okay. All the favors I oppose, say no, I have it. Motion is carry. The next line item are the permission to enter. Ms. Doherty?
Yes, Your Honor, I'm asking for permission to take something out of order. It's actually not on the agenda regarding a rescheduling matter. We were not able to hold our executive session tonight, and I'm looking to reschedule that for next week and to have the opportunity to go back into open session after the executive session to finalize the matter that we were going to discuss regarding the BHPK report tonight.
Okay, so you're requesting to, I think the executive session, we could poll the members for that, but you're also asking for us to have a special meeting?
Yes, that we have executive session, then be able to go into open meeting after that, and that the lawyers also be in attendance, the BHPK lawyers. And I don't know if Mr. Skinner has had the opportunity to get a sense of whether we can get council chambers next Wednesday. That would be, I think, a date that would be amenable for most members. I haven't talked to people, but I know I did speak with Ms. Martin, and she said next Wednesday would work for her.
Mr. Superintendent, does something, you could poll the members?
Yes. So, Ms. Doherty, we were able to find out, and the chambers are available for Wednesday evening. We thought Wednesday at 6, if that suits the committee. I don't know if it's appropriate for people to indicate their availability now, but you're welcome to. We have established that the chambers are available.
I think, given the timeline that we're under, we should make a commitment tonight, if possible. I know Ms. Martin had said she could be available. I'm available. And Mr. Skinner, Superintendent, could you reach out to the lawyers and let them know that we have rescheduled?
You're referring?
BHPK. Because we need them.
Are you asking the BHPK to attend the executive session?
Yes, because it would be to discuss the report.
Okay.
I should only clarify, it may be of interest. I've never had contact with the BHPK except for one interview earlier, many, many months ago. I'm happy to look up their contact information and reach out to them, but I've not been a regular contact with that company.
Well, I know that Ms. Martin is our point of contact, but I don't want to put that on her, where she's not here to speak for herself. That's why I was thinking if the administration could handle that for us, to give them as much notice as possible.
Certainly.
I'm okay attending the executive session next Wednesday, but I don't know if this would be the appropriate time to ask for a public meeting right after the executive session yet, because we don't know what it's going to be talking about in the executive session, if it'd be ready for the public.
So it would be the option to have an open meeting, because obviously, if this board makes any decisions in executive session, it needs to be voted on in open session. And we have already, I believe, canceled the December 20 meeting, which is our last meeting with the current board. So I think there's a timeliness factor to that, which makes it important that we have that option. To whatever actions we decide, in executive session, we need to be able to meet as a body in open session to vote on it.
Okay. I think if you put that as an option for the public meeting, the special meeting after the executive session, but I'm not quite sure how that will work. Madam Secretary, we would have to publicize the special meeting as well.
Yeah, you, no, you would just put the BHPK report on the agenda as a discussion.
Right.
And then you have the ability to, when you make this speech, to go into executive session, you would say, and we'll return to open session. Then you can come back to open session and just adjourn if you want to.
Right.
If you don't want to discuss anything further.
Okay.
Do you want to take a roll call on that, to see?
So you want to make sure, a motion on the floor to?
Yes, reschedule the executive session for next Wednesday at 6 o'clock.
Right.
Invite BHPK to attend and to open, to be able to close in open session.
To have the option to have a special meeting, depending on the executive session discussion.
Right.
Okay. All right, second by Ms. Thompson. Madam Secretary, roll call please.
Mia Chow.
Yes.
Ms. Chun.
I just want to clarify on this. So we're going to have executive session, then we will go into an open meeting for the public, correct? Yes.
Mr. Rossi?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
I just want to say that I have schedule conflicts, so I can't make it. I vote yes, but I won't be here.
Okay. Ms. Martin? Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Six ayes, one absent.
Okay. That completes. Now we go to where we left on the agenda. This is the permission to enter. Any comments or questions on the permission to enter? Okay. Mr. Rossi?
Sorry. I do have just one question on the SLA logistics, and there's probably a very good excuse for this, but $63,000 to provide round-trip transportation for two students living in Lowell, being transported to the Sumner School in Boston. I just wonder, because their profile is not different from any school in Lowell, and what their services could provide. So I just was questioning that.
Your question is welcome, Mr. Rossi. I believe we're obligated to transfer, to transport the students. Dr. Hall, I believe, may have more information. Dr. Hall?
The superintendent's correct. There is a legal requirement to transport the students, and that's the cost that we've been provided. It could be for a variety of reasons. Those could be some of the reasons.
Any other comments or questions on the permission to enter? No, need a motion to doubt, to approve by Ms. Thompson, second by Mr. Rossi. Madam Secretary, roll call please.
Mia Chow?
Yes.
Ms. Chun?
Yes.
Mr. Rossi?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Six ayes, one absent.
We are now at the motions section. We'll start 5.1. This is a motion by Mr. Rossi, request superintendent to report on where the family leadership role is in the progress of developing more parent-friendly classes, second by Ms. Chun. Any comment, Mr. Rossi?
I would just like to comment that even this past week, that I've seen a lot of involvement with the State Department of FSSIS, I believe it is, and all the graduates. So I'm kind of seeing it, which speaks to the motion response or towards the motion, which will probably be a lot of the motion response of families that have engaged with this collaboration, which is essentially so important. So I essentially want an update about what exactly parents are getting who can't speak the language of English. So, thank you.
Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you. Mr. Rossi, we'll be happy to give you that update and that response to the motion. I just wanted to point out, there happens to be an item on tonight's agenda that relates to the Family Institute. It's number 710. It's just about one particular aspect, one event, but we'll be happy to give you further details in a proper response.
Any other comments or questions? No, all the favors I oppose, say no, I have it. Motion is carry. The next motion is 5.2, also by Mr. Rossi, request superintendent to invite Glenn Kuchar to attend meeting in December to begin blue-ribbon committee search. Do you have a second? Second by Ms. Thompson. Before you start, I just want to, I believe that December, this is the last regular meeting, and then we may have a special meeting. That's just an option, but would you like to amend the motion?
Yes, and it can be like within the first two weeks after like January, but I thought we asked for this at the Human Relations Subcommittee meeting or the Human Resources Subcommittee meeting, where we were, where it was requested for everyone to kind of get on board with this. So we had a better timeline and better time for this. So if we could do it within the first two weeks of January, I'd be grateful. Thank you.
Yes. The motion is amended to within the first couple of weeks of January 2024. Amendment accepted by the second. Ms. Thompson, no other, Mr. Lay?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. May I request that this motion is very, is similar to 8.2, which is about discussion about superintendent search. So I suppose, could we take that out of order and discuss it with 5.2? And for me, for me, I feel that the, in comes in January, we will have three new members. We're going to have two new school committee members.
We did have a second on that motion, and you're requesting to bundle?
To bundle 8.2.
To take 8.2 out of order and bundle it with that motion we just completely discussing. Do we have a second on that? Well, this is a motion to amend it, to bundle and take it up with, was it 5.1 or 5.2, correct? 5.2. So we had a motion that was second, but you, Mr. Lay is requesting a suspension of rule to take 8.2 out of order and to bundle it with 5.2. And do we have a second on that?
And the reason, Mr. Mayor?
By Ms. Doherty? Okay, go ahead, Mr. Lay.
And also, the reason is, we're going to have three new members, going to have a new mayor and two new members of school committees. And I believe they want to have a saying in this process also. So I'd like to ask if it's okay to take on this at our second meeting in January, because the first meeting in January is pretty much a celebration, and the new members may not have a chance to catch up with what we have done. So I just want to see if, want to make that friendly amendment to put this motion for the second meeting in January, if that makes sense.
And that would be roughly around the same timeframe, the second meeting, correct? This is the third week?
Yeah.
We're just waiting for Mr. Rossi to come back? If I were to just make the chairman's decision from up here, if I could have the approval of the board, I would ask Mr. Rossi to accept the amendment to the third week of January. If the body, the council be okay, I would inform Mr. Rossi when she returns to her desk, what you, what the member of the board, would you accept to the third week of January? Verbal approval, please, from any of the council, any of the school committee members?
I'm fine with it.
Are you okay with that? Okay. I would inform Ms. Rossi. So the request from Mr. Lay is to ask the, make the motion to combine it and have a third week of January.
Mr. Mayor, in all fairness, I think that this motion is also dependent on Mr. Kuchar's schedule. I think what most needs to really happen is he needs to be contacted to find out what his schedule is, but the intention of starting in the second week, I mean, I think we all had to trial by fire the first couple of weeks. the first couple of weeks coming in, and the people coming in also are not new to school committees. So I think that there's a different vantage point as well. But whatever the will of the body is, because I obviously will not be here.
Okay. Mr. Rossi, just to give you an update. So your motion was to have invite Mr. Kuchar for the second, by the second week of January, but with the school committee meeting schedule is like the first and the third week. Would the third week be okay by you?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay, acceptable by the maker of the motion to accept the amendment and the bundling, second by Ms. Thompson. Still, any other discussion on this one, on these two items? Ms. Doherty?
I think that because the H R Labor Relations Subcommittee meeting, except committee was chaired, is chaired by Ms. Martin, we really can't report out on this without her presence. So I think we'd be delaying this report as well.
Okay. Well, I think, I think Ms. Thompson said it, but it's the intention that we try to make it happen on that date. And of course, always things happen with scheduling, people scheduling. If it need to be changed, amended the date, I think the body, the school committee body can make a change at that time. Okay? With that said, Madam Secretary, please roll call.
Roll call.
Yes. Just because there's some changes, I want to make sure everybody's on the same, on the same page.
So did you, you didn't amend the motion. You had a friendly amendment, but then you suspended the rule, so you have to do all in favor of at least the suspension of the rule.
We did, we did have a, some by second, I think Ms. Thompson, or Ms. Doherty, Ms. Doherty also there. So we have a second on both motions.
Yes.
Now it's just to approve the motions by the member of the body here. Do you want to roll call, or you want to just do it by voice, words, okay?
8.2 out of order.
I think we need to vote on two things. Mr. Mayor, do we need to accept the bundle first?
We did.
Do we need to vote on that, on then, and then?
We did, we had a second. That's what we do now. The roll call is to approve both motions, including the amendments with intention of the third meeting, the third week of January as well. So we discussed both motions. We discussed the bundling. We have the second on both of them on the bundling as well. So we just now need to vote. So, Madam Secretary, is that correct, just to do the roll call and the?
No, I would, I would accept the suspension of the rules first and then vote on the friendly amendment.
We did. Ms. Doherty?
We had a second, but you, okay.
Didn't we have that? Okay.
If you, I mustn't have heard.
Okay, so let's have Ms. Doherty also accept the suspension of rule also, just to be clear.
She's second.
She's second, okay. And who accepted the suspension of rule? Mr. Rossi? Okay, Mr. Rossi. Have you missing any other steps?
No.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Mayor Chow.
Yes.
Ms. Chuen.
Yes.
Mr. Rossi.
Yes.
Ms. Doherty. Mr. Lay.
Yes.
Ms. Martin. Ms. Thompson.
Yes.
Six sheyes, one absent.
There was a lot of insertions in amendments and approval with those two motions combined. We now go back to where we left off at 5.3. A motion by Ms. Thompson, motion to review all building safety procedures to include external door or window checks, as well as looking into the cost associated with installation or upgrade to external cameras at all district locations. Second by Mr. Lay. Ms. Thompson?
I think this is fairly obvious why I would might, why I would come up with a motion such as this, with what has been happening. And fortunately, we had school staff that was very alert and did not allow for entry. But again, we need to make sure that we're doing all that we can on our end to ensure the protection of students and staff. But in addition to this, I actually had a couple of students reach out to me. One that I guess they did a mock situation regarding an entry point. And he was saying that, you know, the young kids, and he was younger, he was in the elementary school was really, or middle school, was interested in how they can participate in talking about their experience and kind of their stressors surrounding that. So that's something that I would like for you to consider. And then in addition to this, I had a few people from the high school call me, students from the high school call me about the concern, this is why they want their phones. And so I just wanted to make sure that I put that on the, on the record for the reason that several of them were really concerned was because of situations like this. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Do we have Richard speak on this one?
Yes. Mr. Delorb.
Thank you to the respected members of the school committee, Mayor Chow, Superintendent Skinner. I want to extend my gratitude to Committeewoman Thompson for initiating a discussion of paramount importance that resonates with every student of the Lowell Public School System. My name is Kendrick Delorb, and I'm a junior at Lowell High School. Today, I wish to address the proposed cell phone lockbox policy, a matter that has evoked considerable concern amongst the student body. While the intentions behind enhancing school safety are undoubtedly commendable, the extreme security implications of confiscating private property, particularly the primary tool for communication for extended periods of demands, are thoughtful consideration. It is disconcerting that students and parents were not afforded the opportunity to contribute their perspectives on a policy that significantly impacts our daily lives. I respectfully question the legitimacy of such a decision to urge, and I urge the Office of Superintendent to pause the implementation of this widely unpopular policy, facilitating an open dialogue that includes all stakeholders in shaping safety measures and best practices for students. In addition to the cell phone policy, I would like to draw attention to the learning environment within our schools. It has come to my attention that some teachers employ an unengaging and unenriching format for education, which may inadvertently lead us students to seek distraction through their phones. I propose that school management consider conducting a thorough audit of all curriculum items and assignments. This audit could identify areas for improvement, both academically and psychologically, fostering a more stimulating and rewarding educational experience. Let us strive for a school community that not only prioritizes safety, but also actively seeks to enhance the quality of education for all students. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for coming to speak on this very important issues. Any other comments or questions on this motion still? Ms. Thompson?
I just want to say thank you for coming. With young people like you, I feel like we're in a good place. We're in a really good place. I definitely did not sound like that as a junior in high school. So thank you so much, and continue to make sure your voice is heard.
No other comments or questions on favor of the I, opposed, no, the I's have it, motions carry. The next motion is 5.4, motion by Ms. Thompson also to establish a relationship with a vendor for the purpose of scheduling and hosting ongoing trainings in the areas of anti-racism, bias, and bullying to be attended by all district chiefs and members of the school committee, as well as other interested parties. Second by Ms. Chuen. Ms. Thompson?
I think that, you know, Lowell has made lots of pledges and has made lots of commentary about who we are. And I think that in order to ensure that we're not just talking, it's important to make sure that we're doing all the things to train ourselves and equip ourselves with the information. I had mentioned something to this degree before. I know I've mentioned it and had a conversation with Mr. Skinner in part about trainings. And, you know, again, I think it's just really something that would enrich the chiefs and the school committee as well. I think that, again, we have to talk the talk and walk the walk as well. So that is why I made this motion. Thank you.
Ms. Doherty?
Thank you. I think this is an excellent motion. I want to remind Ms. Thompson, as well as the committee, we did have training led by our own students, which was awesome. And I think that to follow up with something, and I would ask if the maker of the motion would consider a friendly amendment to include principals in this list, to really, you know, identify a vendor, somebody that would provide with us with good, thought-provoking professional development, and hold it and include the principals, as well as our assistant superintendents and the members of the school committee. I think that it would be a very worthwhile opportunity for all of us. So are you comfortable with adding principals?
Okay. I'm excited by the maker of the motion and also accepted by the member who seconded. Any other comments or questions on, Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you for, Ms. Doherty's friendly amendment. Principals and assistant principals go to Leadership Academy, and it's been a major theme over the last several years. So there's been considerable training given to all of our leaders and the schools to date. It doesn't mean they can't benefit from more, but I want you to be able to consider that when you consider the motion.
Ms. Doherty?
Perhaps you, through this process, already have somebody in mind that could provide that training then. And I'm certainly not looking to make it mandatory, but I instead would want to be inclusive of all of our leadership. So if there are other people, other stakeholders that you would want to include, Superintendent Skinner, that's fine. But my intention is to back up Ms. Thompson's motion with just broadening the net a little bit.
Thank you.
Ms. Thompson?
Just, I want to be clear that I believe that Ms. Phillips should be in very integral part in deciding who comes in, as this is her area of expertise as well. So I just want to make sure that that was noted. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions on these motions? Here none, on the favor of the I, opposed, no, the I's have it, motions carry. The next item is a subcommittee report. The chairperson of the H R Labor Relations is not present tonight, so need a motion to defer to the following meeting by Ms. Doherty, second by Mr. Lay, on favor of the I, opposed, no, the I's have it, motions carry. Next items are the reports of the superintendent. These are under Section 7. And these are, we start with the motion response. 7.1 is a motion response to Mr. Rossi of age 1623 regarding health and physical education curriculum. Any comments or question, Mr. Rossi?
Just thank you for posting that and making sure that parents are aware and have access. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions on this? Here none. The next motion response, 7.2, in regards to motion by Ms. Doherty of 9/21/22 for F R C hours. Any question or comment, Ms. Doherty?
No, I just want to say thank you for this report. Thank you for the extended hours. It's been something that's been very important to me, that we are more user-friendly for our families. So I appreciate it. Thank you.
No other common questions. We take on the next motion response to Mr. Lay of 11/15/23 regarding Election Day P D location. Mr. Lay?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. And thank you for, Ms. Ruberg, for the report. I have a question. If, if we close that school completely so that only the voters would be able to go to the school that has the polls, and the staff from that school go to a different school for that one particular day, would that be something that's doable? I thought that would be a best-case scenario, rather than fighting with the staff and regarding to to the parking, and, you know, you can park on the, on this spot, and you cannot park on that spot. I just have a feeling that might be more, more difficult.
Mr. Superintendent?
I think, Mr. Lay, that's a, that is a good option. It happens that since your motion, and since we wrote, since Ms. Crocker provided the response, the mayor's, excuse me, the city manager's office has reached out because the gentleman who oversees elections for the city is also concerned about the March primary date. So there'll be primary elections in March. Whereas when we wrote this motion response, we were thinking about next year's presidential election mostly. So I have an upcoming meeting with the city manager where we are going to come to a consensus about how to manage the elections. That option of vacating a school is one of those options that are on the table. So thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Any other comments or questions on this one? Here none. We now go to the next motion response to Mr. Rossi's of 3/15/23 regarding Lowell High School fresh air intake. Mr. Rossi?
I just wanted to thank you for that accurate response. I think that's what some people wanted to know what was going on or how much fresh air would be allowed. So thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Here none. So the following items are the report from the superintendent. 7.5's on bias and bullying incidents report. Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think for the most part, each of the following items could be considered, with the exception of home education, which I think requires a vote. They could be considered to be reports of progress. And so I'll take any questions from any committee member on any of 7.5 through 7.10, if that meets your approval.
Yeah. On that note, just let me, just for clarity and simplifying the process, let me ask to bundle 7.5 through 7.10 by Ms. Thompson. Second by Mr. Lay. I'm going to just read this main item briefly, and then we can discuss on any one of the items individually. 7.6 F R C monthly update, 7.7 S R spending update, 7.8 quarterly report on motions, 7.9 K P I report, 7.10 Family Institute for Student Success. And as Mr. Superintendent indicated, these are reports of progress. When I call on you, if you'd like to speak on any specific items, please let the superintendent know. Ms. Thompson?
I just want to make, this is not really delving into 7.5, but knowing this is my last meeting, I just want to say two things. One, I implore you all to not just keep taking the numbers down, but commit to finding out the root cause for these bullying numbers, because as I'm looking at the bullying numbers, they're on the rise up again, and that's obviously really concerning. So even though they're ever so slight, I'm really grateful for this report. Continue, you know, giving this report. I think it's very, very helpful. But I'm hoping that we now get to the next stage, which is really identifying root causes. Thank you.
Any other specific comments or questions to any of the items? Here none. That should complete the discussion. Need a motion to accept all these reports of the superintendent from Ms. Doherty, do you have your hands raised?
Sorry.
Okay, Ms. Doherty?
I just wanted to, I know that we had a motion tonight about the Leader, Family Institute for Student Success, the Family Leadership motion by Mr. Rossi. And I know you'll be doing a follow-up. So I see this as an update. I'm just wondering if we can get kind of a a bigger snapshot in that follow-up report, like what is the institute costing? We have 24, this talks about 24 parents who graduated, took six different sessions, what the sessions were about. But maybe to give us a a larger view of how many other parents are involved, you know, really, what is it costing us from the budget? And what are we getting? What are the benefits for families that we're seeing? This was a new initiative, so I'm looking to get more data on it. And I know that was what Ms. Del Rossi's motion asked for. So I thought I'd just provide some clarification from my point of view, what I'd be looking for.
Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you. We'll be happy. I've taken notes. We'll be happy to provide all those details. Thank you.
And one more thing on the quarterly motions. I know I owe you another update about what you can take off that's mine, and I'm pledging to do that. I will get that to you by email. Because I know we're trying to whittle these outstanding motions down, so that we're just working on the ones that are still uppermost. Thank you.
Ms. Thompson?
To that end, I just want to say I have lots of motions on here, correct? Feel free, any of my colleagues, to continue them on. But there are four in particular that I really do want to make sure are responded to in January. Page eight, the mental health guidance supports. That's really important to me to make sure our mental health team and professionals are supported. The one on page 11, which is about energy efficiency. We really need to speak to that as we continue our build. Page 14, the one on roofs and air intake. And then finally, the one in the high school on page 15 about the bathrooms. And that is the major four for me. Thank you.
Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you. I'm tempted to make extended remarks towards Ms. Thompson, because we, you commented in relation to the previous item on the bullying incident report, that you've been very instrumental in sort of shaping our responses and that you've been very instrumental in sort of shaping our responses, and we really appreciate that. I do think it's important, and I think its importance will outlive your time on the committee. But I also want to say that we, I've heard you, and the importance of the motions that you have yet on there. And we will be happy to work with the ongoing committee. Thank you. May I make one further remark? I think it's important for the committee. We not only are attempting to respond to your motions promptly, as was promised, and I think the members of the cabinet have been, have done a lot of work this fall to do so. But we want to be clear with you when we consider the motion response to be sort of, now it's completed, right? So, we're finished with it. And so, in the motion report, there is a column to the right that says, you know, it's been completed. It's only completed when this committee decides, and say, for instance, Mr. Rossi, thank you for your response, and that the motion is completed, right? We need to know, in other words, when to remove it from the list. And so, that's how we're indicating it on this form. If you are welcome to review, and if you see a motion that says, yes, it's completed, and you dispute that, please tell us, because we're happy to follow up further. But we do need some clarity about when are we finished with that one? And that why indicates to us after this report is completed. If you agree, we can say that one is finished. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? I need a motion to accept all these reports of superintendent. This report of progress by Mr. Lay, second by Ms. Del Rossi, on favor of the eye, post say no, eyes have it, motions carry. The next line item is the home education. Any comments or questions on this one? Here none. Need a motion to approve by Ms. Doherty, second by Mr. Lay. Madam Secretary, roll call, please.
Mayor Chow?
Yes.
Ms. Chun?
Yes.
Mr. Rossi?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Six sheyes.
The next item is the approval of the new job description, and this can be discussed at the next meeting. So, need a motion to refer this to the next meeting by Mr. Lay, second by Ms. Thompson, on favor of the eye, post say no, eyes have it, motions carry. And I believe 8.2, we just taken that up already. We now go to 8.3, the Budget Transfer, in the amount of $1,202,24.62. Any comments or questions by any of the members? This is 8.3 on the Budget Transfer. I see people just shuffling the papers. No comments or questions? Need a motion to approve by Ms. Thompson, second by Ms. Doherty. Roll call, please.
Mayor Chow?
Yes.
Ms. Chun?
Yes.
Mr. Rossi?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson? Six sheyes, one appson.
Okay. The next line items are the usual business of convention conference. So, need a motion to bundle and approve the convention conference request. These are line item 9.1, 9.2, and 9.3. I'm going to just read them quickly, if anybody has comments. 9.1 Overnight Request, Wang Middle School, Washington DC, Capital Tours Inc. 9.2 Overnight Request, Promising Neighborhoods and Full Service Community Schools, National Network Conference in Washington DC. 9.3 Overnight Request, DEI Summit in Dallas, Texas. Any comments or questions on these line items? Here none. Need a motion to approve by Ms. Thompson, second by Ms. Chun. Roll call, please.
Mayor Chow?
Yes.
Ms. Chun?
Yes.
Mr. Rossi?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Six sheyes, one appson.
And the, I must be reading my watch incorrectly. We are at number 10, professional. I won't ask the members for the time anymore. 7/24, professional personnel, any comments or questions on this line item? Here none. Need a motion to approve by Mr. Rossi, second by Ms. Doherty. Roll call, please.
Mayor Chow?
Yes.
Ms. Chun?
Yes.
Mr. Rossi?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Six sheyes.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. And to the, Mr. Lay, did you?
I just want to say before you ask for adjournment, I want to ask for a personal point of privilege. But anyway, you.
Go ahead, Mr. Lay.
I just want to say that, you know, you survive as a, in the school committee, as the first Cambodian mayor. Congratulations. And I just want to say that we just, we had an incredible privilege to serve here in this, in this term for having three Cambodian-American serving on the school committee. And I feel, I really enjoyed serving with everybody, but especially with the two other members who are Cambodian-Americans. I have a good thing to say about it, and also I have some disappointing to say about it, if you don't mind. As a, as a Cambodian-American, I feel proud that we have three, three members out of seven here in Lowell, serving on the school committee. Because I could speak for your brother and for your parents, because I'm a couple of years older than you guys. And I, and I have been living, growing up in Cambodia during the hard time. And, you know, I spent my childhood looking for food and not about education, and spent 14 hours a day working. So, so as Cambodian, we all went through that when we came in the 80s. When we came in the 80s, we looked stupid. We acted a little stupid, because we never had any, any formal education. And we were hungry, actually, when we landed here. So, so back then, when we speak about, when we say we are Cambodian, people don't give us much thought. All they, all they could remember is, oh, did you go through the Killing Field regime? Did you go through that? And it has changed quite a bit in recently, that we have, three of us serving on the school committee. I'm not going to mention the city council. And, and that, that is itself is incredible. So, thanks to the city of Lowell. By that, I mean anybody who involved in this, who has the stake in making us the three members of the school committee. And I want to thank the resident of Lowell that accept us as a member of the school committee. We, we done good things, but I feel that we didn't do enough. I feel that we, we had an opportunity to, we have a missed opportunity to three of us. All we need is one more to make a, to make a quorum. But somehow, I feel that I'm squeezed in between the two sides of the politics from Cambodia. And, you know, in Cambodia, we lost a quarter of the Cambodian populations because back then, the Cambodian leadership did not know how to work together. They fight each other all the time. And that's why we lost 3 million people, that's a quarter of the populations. And that's why Vietnam was able to control Cambodia. Somehow, we, we, younger generation, we somehow, we did not find our way out. And we still stuck in that groove. And I wish that we have one more term that we could work together and build up our Cambodian-American spirits here in this chamber. But I, as I could see in this past term, the three of us could not work together. And I really regret the missed opportunity. But, so, in any event, I'm glad that you are, you are the mayor, and you're the best mayor I worked with. And since I served in the past three terms. And so, for that, I want to thank you.
Write that out.
I want to thank you for that. So, and anyway, I just, that's all I wanted to say. So, so happy Thanksgiving, I mean, happy Christmas holidays. And everybody, I want to say thank you, Ms. Thompson, and Mr. Mayor, and Suzie. I really appreciate the time we spent here together and work together. Thank you.
Thank you. I know that the adjournment is coming next, but I think this being the last meeting, the last regular meeting, I'm going to ask for a motion to suspend the rule and take some time to have, not final speeches, but, you know, just farewell speeches to some of us for the next few minutes. That motion is made by Ms. Doherty, second by Mr. Rossi. Motion is passed. Ms. Doherty?
Thank you. I'm just going to be very quick. I wanted to kind of add on to what Mr. Lay said. This has been the most diverse committee I've had the honor to serve with. And it's been a constant reminder to me at our meetings how important it is to get different perspectives. And I want to just do a shout-out to Ms. Thompson as our first African-American school committee member. I think she's done an excellent job. I have learned, watched her in awe, how she keeps her cool and manages to be pleasant while pushing back, something I could definitely learn from myself. And I just wanted to just say that we need that diversity on our boards. We need that diversity in our leadership and in our schools, because it does matter on so many fronts. And I wanted to thank my colleagues for giving me the opportunity to serve with you and learn from you and hear your different perspectives. And although we might not always agree, I feel that we have come together in many cases to do the work of the people and move our schools forward. So, thank you.
Mr. Rossi?
I guess you could qualify me as a, as a political neophyte. But in the same time, serving with all of you has, has truly given me a perspective that I would never in my life experience. Ms. Thompson, I met you one night, and I was like, all I know is I like that girl. And it's only grown from there. And I admire your words, your vocabulary, how you put together speech, and how you just articulate your thoughts better than most people could ever do. And I mean, serving on this committee with you has been beyond an honor and a privilege. Mayor Chow, your wisdom in situations and your political experience to boot. It's been amazing to watch you grow in your position as mayor, as well as your growing gray hair. But it is your time.
I'm just speaking the truth.
But I would like to thank you for your approaches to life and your own experience, not only in your own life, in Lowell, as you've come to Lowell, and have worked in the political forums. So, thank you, and I admire you for all that you do. Suzie, you know you're like family to me since the charter school. I mean, being able to serve with you on your first term as a school committee member and seeing you find your voice about what you're so passionate about only reaffirms to me how strong you are and how good you're going to do in whatever you do in life. So, I would like to just thank you all for this experience, from Jackie to Dominic to Connie to Stacy, Wendy, Robin, Billy Joe, Mary, Superintendent Shan. Mayor Chow, interim Superintendent Skinner. Mr. Hall, Dr. Hall, Ms. Phillips. You've all expanded my horizons of life and understanding, and I am beyond grateful for all of that from all of you. Thank you.
Ms. Chun?
Yes, thank you for allowing me to speak. And, you know, I just want to say thank you to each and every one of you to allow me to serve our students and our families. You guys know very well that, you know, for becoming a school committee, I've always advocated for so many other causes in our city. You know, it's an honor, and it's a privilege, and it's bittersweet to me. I don't want to start bawling my eyes. But, you know, I continue to serve our community in other ways, not as an elective official, but also as someone who's very active and always love our community. And we know we thrive when we work together. And I want to go back to my colleagues saying that we don't work together as Cambodians. We put a lot of things, our differences aside, because we know that for the betterment of our city, our students and our community, put what we feel, we bring our perspective as who we are, and we build on that. We build on positivity. And I will continue doing that. And I love to be here in the city of Lowell. You can never take a city girl out of the city of Lowell, because you know why? I've come from Texas. I've married to a family who have a farm. I can never go back living in that kind of situation. You can never take me out of there, and I will continue to do what I do. And I need to find the voice for our students and our family and our city. And this will not deter me from doing what I love to do, and that's to serve the community without being an elective official. And I will still do that. So, thank you. It is an honor. Thank you. Please be the voice for our students, our families. Even though I'm not going to be here, but I'm counting on all of you. We're holding you accountable, and I will hold you accountable as a citizen of the city of Lowell. Thank you.
Ms. Thompson?
So, you said no speeches, but I do write speeches, because that's just how I am. So, I'll just read it. It says, "This journey now nearing its conclusion has been enlightening, enriching, and educational. A question was posed this year about me and what happened to me. And I suppose the easiest answer is nothing and everything. Nothing in that the fundamental things about me, my commitments to equity, integrity, and my faith remained entirely intact. And everything in that this role has opened my eyes to so much about the inner workings of the district, the political landscape of Lowell, and of people. I walked into this role to amplify the voices of young people who didn't feel that their voices, thoughts, concerns, or requests were being heard. In doing so and listening to the community, I was able to exact some work I'm very proud of. We now had district-wide financial wellness program that's heavily supported by community organizations, bullying, discrimination, and racism dashboard transparency and reporting, disaggregated data specifically around our Latino-Hispanic successes and challenges, park signage for our nonverbal community, and a commitment to work around, work surrounding our homeless youth student experience and our efforts around sustainability. I would like to also think I played a role in the building maintenance can not being continually kicked down the road. To the young people, I want you to know you matter. Your feelings are valid. Your insights are guiding, and your voice, both collectively and individually, is powerful. Stay engaged. Hold people accountable to what they say they will do. Speak out. People will listen, because guess what? They have to. And remember, there's an exquisiteness in what makes you unique and a beauty in what we have in common. Thank you to District 1 for electing me the first Black woman to municipal office in the city of Lowell, and the first woman of color ever elected in the city of Lowell. I am history in the present, and my presence will remain as representation. Equity and inclusion still matter. Thank you, and be blessed."
Thank you. I know Mr. Superintendent has a quick presentation for us as well. But I feel that we are in a sharing moment right now. And if I don't share a little bit of my thoughts, I would be remiss. But I don't want to say too much, because honestly, I will start to cry. And my mom said, if you're going to cry, go cry at home. So, you know, so I, I will save- you're gonna cry, go, go cry at home, so, you know, so I, I will save my, my tears when, when I get home, and, um, I, I'm really honored to, to serve, um, the chairman of the school committee, uh, board here, and, um, you know, I, I think many times being, being the, the chairman and, uh, the mayor and trying to do what's best for the city, um, many times you, you face situations, issues, that you, you wonder why anybody in their right mind, uh, decide to, to run for public office, uh, to serve the, the community, and it's, you know, out of three hundred and sixty-five days, and you have one day like this to hear the, the real thoughts, the heartfelt thoughts and speeches by, uh, fellow elected members, then you realize, this is why, why you do it, um, you do the best work that, that, that you can, uh, for the public, for policies and, and so forth, but all of us, each of us, have tremendous challenges and sacrifices with families, personal times, uh, just, just, just to serve, and, um, I wanna thank all of you for welcoming me to serve on the school committee side, I have to be, um, honest, when I was elected, when I wanted to become mayor, I, I didn't think that the school committee was, was much work, because I grew up loving the school systems, I respect the teachers, so I, I put myself probably in a mindset of students, uh, mindset of respect of the school institution. After I got elected as mayor, uh, two words came from everybody, even former mayor, like John Lay, he was in the, in the audience as well, one of the best mayors I've, I've seen as well, um, congratulation, I would say congratulations, and, uh, condolences in a joking way to serving to the school committee, right, and I said, oh, what, what are you talking about, you know, but, and having gone through this past, uh, two years now, I have to tell you, it's, it's the school committee that, that makes me strong, that make me, um, um, a strong leader, um, I learned a lot from all of you, from Ms. Chun, uh, Mr. Rossi, Ms. Doherty, Mr. Lay, Ms. Moon, Ms. Thompson, all of you have a tremendous skill set, uh, hearts and minds and soul to do what's, what's right, uh, for the school, and each of you bring, uh, different issues, uh, different contributions to the table, and to go back on, uh, Mr. Lay's, uh, comments, sometimes, uh, when we talk, when we disagree on, on, on issues, um, none of us is, is, is wrong, that was the right thing, that we felt was the right, the right way, we, we agree on the, on the policy and items, but we just disagree on approaches, and more often than not, we agree, we agree to, to work together, we agree to get the job done, and I don't remember a time, Mr. Lay, that I disagreed with any one of your motions, um, say with Ms. Chun's, and as well as with all my, my colleagues here and on the council too, um, it's very, uh, most important for me to support all of you, because I think you probably have done more than, than what I could have done, and combined collectively, um, you have done more than I could have done, uh, on my own, so I, I, I really thank, thank, thank all of you for being great public servant, being great, uh, school committee members, and it's also, uh, it's just, um, it's an honor too, to work with, uh, the school administration, um, everyone here, I will save some time, that's my jobs, obviously, move the time, move forward, so everyone's in his room, and everybody, uh, the, uh, the school, the staff, the families, the, everyone that helped make the school district, uh, as great, uh, Lowell's a great city, we're a gateway city, a lot of challenges, but I think that's what make, um, grow, uh, make Lowell better than many of the towns or cities all, all around us, they really look to Lowell as the beacon, you know, they look at us with challenges, if it were to happen to their towns or the city, I don't think they could have overcome it, and we do it over and over again throughout history to now, and in the future, whatever the, the challenges may be, um, so, uh, with that said, you know, I also wanna say, I'm not leaving, uh, I still continue to serve on, on the council, and I will continue now that I have the, the friendship and the relationship with all of you, uh, please reach out to me, and I certainly will, will reach out, uh, to you on many of the issues that we continue to work together, and again, thank you from the bottom of my heart, uh, for being great colleagues. Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, um, I'm personally very grateful to this committee for giving me an opportunity to be an interim superintendent, um, I'm grateful for the support of all of you, uh, Ms. Chun, um, I see, you know, in almost every time, how careful you are, and how thoughtful you are in voting and making decisions and understanding what you're, you're voting on, um, Ms. Thompson, I said before, uh, you have introduced topics that were not top of mind for many of us, that are now commonly understood to be very important and, and need to continue, and, uh, Mayor Chow, um, somebody referred, I think, Ms. Mr. Rossi, to your diplomacy, um, and I'm in admiration of that, as well as, uh, very grateful for your support. Rather than continuing with the speech, I'd like to, on behalf of the cabinet members, and with the great assistance of our communicator extraordinary Jen Myers, we'd like to celebrate you, uh, departing members with a little video, can we cue that up, please?
The school committee that took office in January twenty twenty-two was one of new beginnings and of firsts, things were starting to get back to normal in the district following two years of disruption created by the COVID nineteen pandemic, and this committee was the first elected under the city's new hybrid election system. Chair in the committee was Mayor Sakari Chow, the city's first Cambodian-American mayor and an alumnus of the Bartlett Community Partnership School. As chair, Mayor Chow worked to keep the committee on task and on time, delighting in any opportunity to bundle votes to keep business moving along, however, he never rushed through an opportunity to highlight the positives in the district, like Civic Day, the Programming Initiative, and the Science and Engineering Fair.
And, uh, Kylie, I'm just so impressed with your project, and I just love the title, Printing For Future, so that, that, that's perfect, and it is going to be, uh, the future, so, um, you know, you have the creativity and the technicality, um, just to make it happen, so congratulations to you and to your mom as well, uh, thank you, everyone, for, for being here and showcasing the excellence in science, and, uh, Lowell is very, Lowell Public School, and the city of Lowell is very lucky to have students like, like both of you and all the other students that are very successful, thank you.
He took pride in participating in activities like being a judge at the Knowledge Bowl, and could often be found out in schools, reading to students, talking to them about his role as mayor, inspiring them by sharing his life story, and celebrating with them at cultural events and graduation ceremonies, and meant a lot to our students, particularly those in the Cambodian community, to see a mayor who looked like them. Stacy Thompson, a former teacher, also made history when she was sworn into the Lowell School Committee as the first Black woman elected to any municipal office in Lowell. Stacy's focus was always rooted in a quest for equity, meaning that every student and teacher should have the tools they need, whether that be language access, transportation, curriculum, facilities, or other support services. She, along with City Councilor John Drinkwater, filed motions that led to the installation of alternative, augmentative communication signs, a tool to aid nonverbal communication at all public playgrounds and swimming pools. Stacy was a champion not only for making sure the district had a mechanism for students to report bullying, harassment, discrimination, and racism in the schools, but also that the incidents reported were being taken seriously.
I will say that I was contacted by several people, um, many of which were really concerned because they had entered the system, and all the ones felt like their, what had, what they had entered was been taken very lightly, or was not really, um, was not addressed, and so I want, I wanted to make this motion because, one, I think that equity is important, but at no point can any measure of bullying, harassment, discrimination, racism be taken lightly, um, it not only affects the school, them in school, but it affects them in their livelihood and how they are productive citizens thereafter.
Stacy called upon her own experience as a student who had been homeless to push for additional supports for such students.
To be honest point, people consider housing or homelessness, the people that you're seeing on the street, there is invisible how, um, people suffering from housing insecurity, and I know because I lived it, so the reality was in school, having the same experience, so it's really important for me in particular to look at this, because for me, I may have been one of the lucky ones, but there are so many that are suffering in silence, and it's important for us to make sure that we are putting the practical, the important tools behind these people from elementary school all the way through high school, to ensure that at graduation, they're able to be successful.
In April twenty twenty-two, Suzie Chun, a teacher and Lowell High School graduate, joined the committee following the resignation of member Andy Dakota, she was the first Cambodian-American woman to serve on the Lowell School Committee. As a teacher herself, Suzie loved to get out into the schools to interact with the students, but also to speak with teachers, staff, and parents about the needs in the school buildings. While on the committee, she fought to fix leaks at the McDonough Freshman Academy, and to ensure that school playground equipment was safe for all the kids.
There has been, um, some issues that's been happening at the Freshman Academy, um, especially in terms of the leakage in the hallway, and for me, brings a lot of, um, concern, because we all know that there are some images that I received that has some mold at, growing from the ceiling, and there are, um, trash buckets that our teachers uses to dispose of trash in their classroom, they're using it to, um, catch the dri- the drippings from the, the ceiling, so that's something that's really alarming to me, one, there's mold growing, that's considered hazardous to our students and our staff, um, you know, it might not take effect in terms of their health at this point, but eventually, it might affect them in, in the long run. I've visited a couple of playgrounds and, um, noticed that there are, um, some play structures that are, require some attention, and, um, for me, seeing that, um, it, it is important for our students to have an adequate, um, play area, playground, and it is essential for our students', um, health and wellness, and, um, having that been said, I would like to, um, uh, the request for this superintendent to look further into, um, the play structure and playgrounds at our, um, our schools, and, um, and my question as well is to, whose responsibility for, um, fixing the play structures, so...
From all of the Lowell Public Schools administrators, teachers, staff, and families, thank you for your service, although you will no longer be obligated to sit in these chambers on Wednesday nights, we know you will continue to be part of and advocate for our school community, best of luck in all of your future endeavors. The school committee that took office in January twenty...
Thank you, thank you, Jen and James, for, for that video, uh, well, well done, um, it's good to have some laughs as well, thank you for that. Mr. Superintendent?
Mr. Mayor, if I may, again, on behalf of the, the cabinet, the central office, we'd like to leave, uh, our departing members with the momento of your time on the school committee, and so, um, not quite sure how to do this, but, uh, Ms. Thompson, do you care to come up, or I can come to you?
We love you.
Um, Ms. Chun?
Hold on, let me stuff this for Mary. Sorry, hey, we gotta laugh about this, you know? Excuse me, ma'am.
Excuse me, sorry.
And, uh, Mr. Mayor, please. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to suggest, I think we're good and ready to adjourn.
I think that's, uh, that does a wrap.
I don't want to adjourn tonight.
A motion to adjourn by Ms. Doherty, seconded by Ms. Thompson, on the favor of the AI, post a note, I have motion to carry, thank you, everyone, for being here, for watching, everyone watching at home, have a great night, and happy holidays.